Please be with us this night, watch over and keep us all from harm or accident. Especially those who've traveled afar that they might be able to travel safely home and find all well there. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country, Father in Heaven. We're thankful for law enforcement and for our military for protecting us and keeping us safe. We ask that they might continue to bless us and help us as we go through this night. And we do this in name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, please repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation ununderdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Vincent and Assessor Wilde. We have the minutes from April 23rd, 2025.
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from April 23rd, 2025.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the minutes from April 23rd, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three, administrative review reports, future agenda items. Commissioner Perry?
I just want to point out the fact that again, May 10th came around, had a successful May 10th celebration at Promontory Summit. Not Promontory Point, because that's further south, but at Promontory Summit, had a great May 10th celebration. All three commissioners participated, along with Representative Peterson and many other great community members that helped in the reenactment. Along with, we had the Northwest Benishoshoni, the Chinese workers association and the Irish were all there. Great opportunity for families to be involved and probably had about, they estimated about 1,500 to 2,000 people that day that came through the park that day. So, a great, great, great event for our area and to commemorate something that only happened in Box Elder County.
Thank you, appreciate that. That was good activity. Commissioner Vincent, do you have anything to add?
Well, I have a lot to add.
Okay, let me see. Do you have anything more specific to add?
You know, actually, it was, couldn't have asked for a better weekend in Box Elder County. Friday night, we had our branding party out at the fairgrounds, which was tremendous. The turnout was awesome. We were a little bit concerned because we had the monster trucks out there at the same time. So, we were a little nervous that we were going to have a lot of people show up because of that or be able to hear over the noise of those big trucks. But Roughstock played their great music and it was really a great time. It was very well attended. A few of our numbers, we had 307 people come with their brands. We had Farm Bureau served 124 meals and Peach City served 433 cups of ice cream.
Actually, I talked to him, 600.
600 cups of ice cream?
600 is what he told me. He actually brought another 200 out after the initial.
All I know is it was really good. But the Farm Bureau's meal was pulled pork and beans. That was great. That was really good. But it was just so nice to see Box Elder County. I love our fair and those type of things. But we know that there are other people that come from other counties to be with us and stuff. But this was just the start of our 100th year of, our 100th year of love affair, so with our fair. And it's exciting times. We've got a lot of things planned, so this is just, this was just a start. Just a start as we prepare for our 100-year celebration at the fair. And we appreciate those who came and spent the night with us and it was, I really enjoyed it. It was really a lot of fun. And then, of course, we got to go out to the Golden Spike Saturday and it was a lot of fun, but it was a little warm and black, but it was good.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, item number four, former agenda items.
Yes, I have one item. As you recall, a couple of commission meetings ago, there was three or four individuals that wanted some tax-deferred agreements. Asked me to put those together. What I was doing is making monthly payment amounts and he insisted that we didn't set a monthly payment amount for him. Went back and looked at the minutes and I don't think we did. I think we did on the one before and not the one for him. He just wants the ability, it's Dustin Norman, wants the ability to pay, have it all paid off by the end of the year, but not specific set monthly amounts. So, I just need to make sure that's okay with you and I'll go ahead and change the agreement and have it signed.
If that's what we agreed to, then that's.
I'm okay if he gets it paid off. Like we said, it might be cheaper to just go get a loan from somewhere else and get it paid. So, however he gets it paid, as long as we get it paid.
I'll go ahead and make those changes, get it signed and then we'll get it over to you for signature.
That'd be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Emergency management issues. Mark, do we have any?
Well, thank you.
Good. Shirlene, ARPA, LATCF, any issues there? No changes, okay. Item number seven, library access survey, Heather Crockett.
Hi, Heather.
So, my name's Heather Crockett.
Yes, you can hold those cards up, but just please remain seated so everybody can see. Thank you.
My name's Heather Crockett and I work at United Way of Northern Utah and I facilitate the Box Elder Early Childhood Coalition. Our coalition is focused right now on getting more kids enrolled in preschool through a campaign called Read, Talk, Play Every Day. Last year, we were able to get 62 more kids enrolled in preschool, which is great. We have a lot more work to do. One of the ways that we want to focus on helping every child be ready for kindergarten entry.
These kids come in and just take a seat right here on this front row.
Come on up here.
They can sit right on that front row.
Part of the way that we think that families can help their kids get ready for kindergarten is through reading. And as you're aware, there are some issues with accessing the library. So, as a coalition, we prepared a library survey and I would just like to go through some of the results of that survey. So, if you don't mind going through, we got 153 responses, which is great for this area. Of those people, when they were asked how many people currently use the Bookmobile, 74% said no. Go to the next slide. And we asked why and most people said it was because they prefer physical library visits. So, I thought that was some interesting information. Next one. When asked how important do you think it is for children in outlying areas to have access to check out library books? 95% said very important. So, if you're aware, if you have a, let's say you live in the outlying areas, Willard, Perry, Manaway, Corin, Honeyville, and you have a child under the age of five, they cannot get a library card. If you have a child that is going to a Brigham City school, they can get a limited-use library card and check out five books. But all the kids that come to Storytime can't get a library card unless they pay the $60 fee. When asked if you would consider the lack of access to the full library service to be an issue for you, most people responded yes. These were some of the comments that came in. I'm happy to give you full access to all of the comments that were made. The majority of people were just basically saying the Bookmobile has limited access to books. There's not as good a selection, the times aren't always convenient and they would prefer library visits. This was the number that surprised me the most. When asked in this climate, would you be willing to pay an additional property tax to provide library card access for children over half of the population, or the ones that answered this survey said yes, which was shocking to me. Not everyone said yes, but we did get a lot of good responses. These were some of the comments. But the one I want to highlight is all children need free access to books. 97% of the United States population has access to a library. We can figure out a way to get kids access to a library. If you want to go on to the next one. I collected some data just to help you understand the logistics of a few potential situations we can make this work. So, first of all, the population of Brigham City right now is about 20,000. I heard this number was low, some old data. But currently, the library only has 6,000 cards out, which means that you've got about 31% of residents that actually have cards. This is the total budget for the library. It's about a million dollars. The current budget of the Bookmobile is about half a million dollars. And if we were to expand the library access where the people currently have the Bookmobile, you would need roughly $319,000. Go on. People right now, if they are non-resident in Brigham City, can get a $60 card, but they're going to increase that to $100 shortly. A lot of people go to Weber County because they can get a card for $30, which is cheaper. If you live in Tremonton or anybody who lives in Box Elder County can get a free card at Tremonton and Garland's. But again, the location is a little bit difficult to access. This was the most interesting number that I collected. This is the current rate of property taxes for the Brigham City Library, which is triple what county residents are paying for the Bookmobile. And according to my calculations, if we were to do a rate that was same for everybody countywide, this is the rate that it would need to be, which means more than double the price currently for what Box Elder County residents are paying. So, if you want to look at what that looks like, we have the, yeah, go on. The current rate, sorry, that came across wrong, but it shows you the difference in price. So, going from $55 is what that's supposed to say up to 137 if you raise taxes. Go on to the next one. So, wouldn't you like to be the county commissioners that made literacy accessible to all kids in our county? We know there's further conversations to be had. I only have five minutes to present to you. But we wanted to show you that this is an important issue for county members and we would love and are very open to further conversations to how to make this happen. You'll go on to the next one. Oh, sorry, I sent the old one. But you have two options in order to make this happen. One is raise property taxes and two go after grants. United Way has a wonderful grant database called Candid and I have researched them and found eight different grants that you could apply for. I can't apply for those. I'm not Box Elder County. But if you would like help moving forward with this, we are happy to help you access some of those grants.
Couple of questions. Can we get the geographic area where those 150 people?
Unfortunately, I did not ask that question on the survey.
So, you don't know where they're from?
Correct.
Okay.
Should have.
And the other thing, obviously, we can get a copy of your PowerPoint here. They'll give us something to start with. The only question on the grant, I do know, having talked to the folks at the Bookmobile, is there any, at the United Way, if any of those grants, would they require the Bookmobile, if they were to go down there at the county library, to accept certain books that maybe some people would consider objectionable? Or could they get the grant money and not have to? Some grants come with strings attached to say, you have to carry certain books in your, but we're going to require you to, you can't turn these books away when we feel like they're just not the value of our community?
We'd have to look at the individual grants, but I do not think that that would be a requirement on any of the grants. I've not seen that come across at all.
Good to know. Yeah, just a question, so.
Any other questions?
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be following up.
That's good. We'd like to visit with you and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll send a copy of what you sent us in this PowerPoint, unless you want to send us the new version. If you'll send us the new version and that way we can send it to our Bookmobile director as well to look at, so thank you.
Okay, item eight, attorney's office.
This is a grant that's being provided by the Department of Public Safety for funding of mental health counseling for the county attorney's office and for the Children's Justice Center. As you recall, there's some legislation that's passed that requires this type of counseling to be given. This is a no strings attached grant. They basically just said, we want you to get it. So, and this is the memorandum that allows the county attorney's office to get the grant.
Is this the one that's for the Children's Justice Center and county attorney's office, right? Yeah, it's, and the only strings attached, I will tell, because I actually serve on that committee, is that you can't ask for a second grant. You get it once and then if it keeps works, we have to absorb it if we decide we want to do something. So, other than that, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's right.
So, do we have to approve that by motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion in the memorandum of agreement, number 25-33, with the Department of Public Safety for grant funding to provide mental health counseling for first responders.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve a memorandum of agreement, 25-33, with Department of Public Safety for grant funding to provide mental health counseling for first responders. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Who's in charge of that? Who will be dealing with that?
As far as the accounting, you mean?
That and they need to, they have to file a report back. I know that.
Yes, they do. And from our office, that's Tammy. She's going to be in charge of that.
Okay, great. Okay, item number nine, auditor's office. Shirlene?
Okay, in preparation for the tax cell, I went through all of the properties that were more than five years in arrears or five and greater. And we had some centrally assessed properties that went back a long ways. I think prior to me digging into this, they had just been taken off tax cells and not really dealt with. But as I dug into it and got parcel numbers from the Tax Commission and looked into it, I found different property owners than what they had listed on the centrally assessed data that they give me annually. So, I reached out to those parcel owners that I found and they came in and they paid the taxes and penalties and fees and everything on these two properties to take it off the tax cell. But they've never received any of the tax notices dating back to, one is 2005 and the other one was 2008. So, if you look, you'll see that there's a good majority of interest and such that have applied to the parcels. And so, they asked me to come and ask if you would relieve for some of that interest and penalties that they weren't aware were accruing on their properties. Now, it can also be argued why didn't they ever call the county and say, I have never got a tax bill on these parcels, but.
So, the treasurer's office is the one that sends those, huh?
Yes, and they'll, we'll have, same with me, when I send out the valuation notices, we'll get a lot returning. And so, I am required with the tax cell to send out a certified mailing to every property owner and they all came back with the original ownership information that was on these two parcels. And so, that's when I started digging in to see if I could find anybody to notify that I was going to be selling the properties. And that's when I found parcel numbers from the Tax Commission and reached out to the other ownership.
So, then they didn't get notifications? You're pretty confident in that?
No, they were going to an old company or old people that used to own the properties. There's a break in the system somewhere as far as what the Tax Commission is doing or how they're notified of property tax change, or property changes, like deed changes and so forth. Because I just take the data, you know, that Tax Commission gives me and upload it into our system and we send out the tax notices based on that information.
So, when you said they paid their taxes, did they pay the interest and penalty?
They paid everything to get it to zero value, which they have to do to get it off the tax cell. So, it would be a refund back if you did forgive any of the interest penalties and fees.
So, but they also paid, each of them paid $350 tax cell fee too, right?
Yeah, one was for this year and one was from some prior year. They also tagged on a $75 tax fee way back, but then they must have pulled it off the tax cell, but left the fees on there.
Okay. And it sounds like these people are going to keep up on it. We now have good addresses.
So, also what the centrally assessed people told me at the state is that these properties are going to be now locally assessed from this year going forward.
Okay.
So.
So, they'll be transferring.
I'm going to ensure that it goes to the right address.
So, these will now go to the assessor's office. We won't have to deal with the state on this issue.
Correct. These are old mining claims, but they're not properties that are actively mined out by Lucine and kind of area.
Okay. And it's just the two pieces, two properties that we have here in front of us, correct?
There's a third, but I could never find that even the new ownership returned. So, I haven't, I'll probably reach out to our attorney that we talked with earlier today about that one.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we waive the penalty and interest. They still can pay the tax cell fees, but we'll waive the penalty and interest would be my motion on those two counts.
Second?
And we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to waive penalty and interest on these two accounts that we've discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Shirlene. Okay. Item 10A. Cody, are you going to come and talk to us about this or?
No, we have her on here.
Oh, okay, Tara Roche. Tara Roche, I'm sorry, Tara. We'd much rather talk to you than Cody anyway, so.
Well, that's good because you get to.
Okay, good.
All right, so my name is Tara Roche and I'm here on behalf of Box Elder Strong Together. It's a nonprofit alliance that is dedicated to strengthening our community through collaboration, support and connection. And we are planning our fifth annual 5K run and nonprofit event. So, we have nonprofit booths set over, up over here on the Bill of Rights Plaza. And then we'd like to use the courthouse grounds for some of our activities, such as we're having a cakewalk. And then we have a hero run, so we have our youth dress up in cute little hero costumes that they've decorated and they run around the courthouse with Spider-Man and Superman. But yeah, it's a, it's a very important event that helps to show our community some of the resources that are available to them while also promoting mental and physical health through connection.
Hey, any questions?
The only question is for Cody. Is there any conflict on June 14th?
No.
Buildings available that day or the grounds? Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the request for the use of the Box Elder County Courthouse grounds for Box Elder Strong Together 5K event.
Second?
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the request for the use of courthouse grounds on June 14th for the Box Elder Strong Together. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
And they made it.
I see that. Okay, 10B, Bear River Health Department. Estee Hunt and Jordan Mathis.
You made it okay, huh?
We made it. Who thought that we would have snow in Maine?
Is that what the delay was?
Well, that and the single lane, but there was snow.
Thank you.
Kind of crazy.
After all said and done.
Our chief deputy was probably up shoveling as well, so.
I was going to say, after all said and done, it is Sardine Canyon, right?
Yep. Well, we're here to report the, give the annual report for the Bear River Health Department as required in code. I'm going to just give the first three pages and then I'm going to turn it over to Estee real quick. This is really focused on, we went through a revamp of our values, mission and vision and tied it all into our overall strategic priorities. Those strategic priorities are on that first page as part of my message. And I just want to highlight how those kind of all work together in what we call virtuous cycle. We believe if we're a great organization, we'll attract great talent. Through being a great organization, people want to partner with us. Public health doesn't work in a silo and we require partnerships with all sorts of different agencies and organizations through our community. When we do that well, we create opportunities for people. Those opportunities are focused on allowing people to live the very healthiest lives they possibly can, which ties into our vision, which is to have healthy people in thriving communities. And I just want to talk a little bit about thriving. Thriving is more than just a focus on health. Thriving is allowing people to live to their highest potential. Health is obviously a key component of that. But when we look at health and how we provide opportunities, we have to look beyond just the lens of health. And that's really kind of, in a nutshell, what our refocus is. The other thing I'll share in page three, those are our overall financials. And the only thing that I'll share with the commission is that we're, we're, we're losing a significant amount of funds. We've already lost a significant amount of funds. We've been preparing for that. That line item right there that says health strategy, 2.5 million, that's pretty much essentially vanished from our budget. We've already gone through a reduction in force that was supported by the board. And the other thing I'll point out is that 65% of our expenditures that come, or revenue, sorry, 65% of our revenue is there on the bottom that come through contracts. The majority of that is federal dollars. And we're monitoring the situation right now to determine how that's going to impact the majority of our revenue as a health department. And we're planning for it and we're working with the board on that. But we do anticipate that we could potentially see some additional reductions in revenues. With that, I'm going to turn the time over to Estee to share the rest of our report.
All right, do you need me to talk about this? I don't think that one's working. Okay. I am excited to tell you a little bit about the other strategic goals that we have presented in here that Jordan just briefly talked about. But the next one is on community partnerships on pages four and five. We have actually, in order to strengthen relationships that aim to improve the health of our citizens, we were able to use the county opioid money that has been invested in prevention and has actually formed these seven coalitions that you'll see on page five, meaning that there's, these are community members that have joined. We have community members, stakeholders, representatives of schools, libraries, law enforcement, nonprofits, parents and many others in the community who are part of these coalitions. And they are actually using a evidence-based community, Communities That Care framework. And their goal is to reduce risk factors and strengthen protective factors in creating a healthy environment for young people. The great news about this is you see now specifically, we have two of these coalitions. One is centered more over here in Brigham City area and then the other one is up north more in Tremonton. And they do bring those groups of individuals together to discuss and talk about how to move forward in the future. So, that is one thing that has happened with, that we chose to highlight as a great kind of helping us meet that goal for strengthening relationships that improve the health of our citizens. On page six and seven, we talk about increased access to opportunities in our community. On page six, you'll see that we're talking about an online WIC card that now operates very similar. So, that's the Women Infant Children program that now operates similar to a debit card. It's loaded with the funds and then the individual can take it and shop much like a debit card. It really adds convenience and is, makes it much more accessible for people, especially in rural communities. They don't have to come in to get the money loaded on the card. They can do a lot of their visits online and it does help that program meet the needs of the individuals much more easily than it has in the past. So, that's a big, a big win for the WIC program. One that I really want to focus on with you guys because it's largely your youth over here in Box Elder and you probably already know that, but these kids are phenomenal with the Governing Youth Council. They have done awesome stuff and we chose to highlight them in our report because of the great success they had. As you're probably aware, they talked to local legislators a couple of years ago about the need for youth tobacco cessation services. And that has led to the House Bill 128, which was passed and actually was signed in front of our Governing Youth Council kids with Governor Cox last spring or summer. It was like the first of the summer that he came and signed that. But this group of individuals has, has done so much work. And so, kudos to having such great youth over here in Box Elder County because that is a great success, I think, and something that was definitely worth noting in our annual report. The healthiest people, you guys have all seen this, hopefully you've looked at this report. It was, I believe, attached in your agenda. You all looked at it. So, I won't spend much more time to help you stay on schedule. But this does go through all of the services we offer and how that helps us become the healthiest people here in our community. Do you guys have any other questions? We appreciate your time.
I know Jordan wants to, we know about this as commissioners, but just so the public knows, there's going to be some integration with mental health, more mental health integration with the health department. Even though there's some cuts and stuff, we're still moving toward mental health and drug abuse being kind of married all under the health department's operations.
Right now, where that's at, just so you know, we've received a contract from the state consolidating substance abuse and mental health services. That contract being directly to Bear River Health Department. We're in the process of trying to get a contract established that, with Bear River Mental Health. Now that we have the contract with the state, we're working on establishing a contract with Bear River Mental Health. We're working with Annie and attorney from. We're working with Annie and attorney from from Cache County to go through that. We're hopeful that we can have something done in the next week or two for them to be able to review and have their board look at so that everything's set to go come July 1. But that's that's moving forward. We will be back on the agenda to have you guys consider an appointment as a, we still have to appoint a director of behavioral health. We're gonna do that internally. We had originally opened a position, pulled that back. And we're gonna do that internally because we went through some budget cuts. We decided not to to open it externally or move forward with that. So if that makes sense.
Will our healthy heroes be in next year's report? Can we talk about who our two health heroes were from Box Elder County?
Oh, yeah. That, no, that's, yeah.
Just just so everybody knows, I mean, if you want to tell them about the two health heroes that we recognized just this last week here in Box Elder County with UConn and
Yeah, UConn Water. UConn Water was recognized as a public health hero. They were, they worked in partnership with with DEQ's drinking water to extend the water line to M&amp;J Trailer Park just north of Fielding. They they were a small water system and they were banned from actually using the water for anything other than flushing their toilet because it had such high arsenic levels in it. And so they were bringing in potable water for years in order for them to live. And in that partnership, UConn agreed to 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 work with DEQ to extend that line and provide fresh water to them through the UConn system rather than them having their own. We're hopeful that we could get maybe a few more houses along along that area there as wells in that area tend to have issues just as that water system did. But we appreciate them. And then Jill from the
Families, Brigham City or Box Elder Family Support Center, right?
The Family Support Center. They really go above and beyond with a lot of our clients to provide support for them. And we just appreciated the partnership that we've had with them for clients that are going through recovery, moving through the recovery process, particularly those that have families, small children, things like that. So great work going on with our partners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your report. Okay, just by way of announcement to the group, for those of you who have not attended recently, we have a public comment period at the end of the meeting. There is a sign up role in the back corner of the building. If you want to have a public comment, you need to fill that out and bring the form up to Marla if you want to be involved. And you're sure welcome to. Okay, item C.
You ready?
I'm ready for Commissioner Perry.
So as we're well aware, we have an obligation as a county commission to to help with the nominating process for the Box Elder Judicial Nominating Commission and we need to select three individuals from the county. So we have made phone calls, talked to these three individuals. They're all willing to serve. So we have three people that we're gonna put on the nominating committee that will work with others from the from the from the state. What do they call that, Annie? Judicial Nominating Commission from from the state. They'll they'll have some folks that they appoint, but these are our three appointments from the county that we would make. So my motion would be to, we select Rob Bishop from Brigham City, Chris Marks from Willard, and Trudy Hatch from Tremonton to serve as the Box Elder judicial nominating commission members for that commission, for that. And then also that Chris Marks will serve as the county's appointee to other cities within Box Elder County Judicial Nominating Commission. That would be my motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to select Rob Bishop, Chris Marks, and Trudy Hatch to serve on the Box Elder Judicial Nominating Commission with Chris Marks to serve as the county's appointee on other cities within Box Elder County's Judicial Nominating Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Item D, Commissioner Perry.
Okay, Commissioner Vincent wasn't here, but he's he's been made aware of this. 47G Defense and Aerospace Group is an organization that was created in 2022 and obviously is heavily impacted, does heavily impact Box Elder County because of the number of people we have that live in this county that work at Hill Air Force Base as well as Northrop Grumman here in Box Elder County. And there are some other tech issues with dealing with drones and things like that here in our county. So we have a lot of industry within our county that is touched by the things that 47G does, or yeah, 47G does. And as such, they have an annual membership investment of $10,000 that they invite Box Elder County to be part of, to help participate with this group, to help facilitate and making sure that we have a strong aerospace and technology defense within Box Elder County and working with them. So they've asked for that again. We did it last year and they're asking for this moving forward. And I would make a motion that we approve that membership fee for 47G.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to participate in the 47G Defense and Aerospace Group at the tune of $10,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item E, Annie Hansen.
Okay, on this one, we've got, in the most recent legislative season, House Bill 444 relating to data privacy amendments in the state code has required that we appoint a chief administrative officer to help us comply with data privacy in the county. What we are suggesting to help us get started with compliance is to first appoint this person and then they will help direct the actions of the county to meet these requirements. And our suggestion is that we appoint the position of the IT director rather than an individual in case that changes at some point.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we appoint the IT director position as the county privacy chief administrative officer as explained. Fulfill that obligation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to appoint the IT director position as the county's privacy chief administrative officer to comply with recent state law updates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F on our agenda will be moved to
After item 19.
After item 19. After our closed session. So we will then move on to community development, item number 11A, Scott Lyons.
Good evening. All right, first item, ordinance 621. This is an ordinance that is addressing off-street parking. This one specifically, the planning commission requested that we look into this as we've had parking issues with regard to event centers in the county. So staff did some research and took that information back to the planning commission with which they guided us on what, how they would thought best to proceed. Public hearing was held April 17th. And following that public hearing, the proposed text that you have before you was recommended for approval. Now, as far as that goes, the specifically, it was to address, let's see, there are a few changes. Event centers previously was one space for, one parking space for each three persons based on occupancy as determined by the architect for the facility. That is staying in place or one space per 100 square feet of the building, whichever is greater. So that square footage of the building has the potential to increase parking requirements for event centers. The other one that was basically just a wishy-washy requirement as determined by conditional use permit or planned unit development requirements or by the planning commission and just removed that language and clearly states one space per 500 gross square feet. And that's for wholesale establishments, warehouses, manufacturing establishments, and all industrial uses. So those are, it was kind of clear up some wishy-washy language and then add in some more specific language for a couple of uses that were noticed throughout the county as having substandard parking for different uses.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve chapter 5-2 off-street parking and loading text amendments as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve chapter 5-2 off-street parking and loading text amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number C.
Okay, item C is the improvement agreement, let's see, agreement 25-26. This is the improvement subdivision improvement agreement for the K Meadows subdivision. This subdivision is located west of Tremonton. Pretty minor improvements that are necessary in association with it. But this agreement basically is what provides the outline as to what those improvements are, what needs to be completed by the developer and also ensures financial security that the developer completes those improvements. And if they don't, that security is in place so that the county can use that, those funds to move in and complete those improvements.
So who inspects that?
Darren also has an, he sometimes does the inspections. He also has a public works inspector. And we also have a county engineer we contract. So any of those three individuals do those inspections.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve the, of the approval of improvement agreement number 25-26 for the K Meadows subdivision as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve the request for approval of improvement agreement 25-26 for the K Meadows subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Item D.
Okay, item D is contract 25-34. This is a contract between Box Elder County and the Division of Water Resources with the state of Utah. So I believe it was last year, 2024, is when new legislation was adopted by the state requiring a water element of the of county general plans, city and county general plans. So that water element was required to tie into our general plan as well as the effects on land use. And as part of that, they opened up, they they provided some funding for counties and cities to be able to apply for to complete that update to the general plan. So the county is in the process of updating that section of our general plan. As you're aware, we're doing a countywide water master plan. And so we did apply for, we were eligible for up to $15,000. We applied for that $15,000 grant from the state to assist in funding that countywide water master plan. And this is the contract to finalize the awarding of that grant.
Okay, any questions? Any more questions?
No, other than we just gotta change who the signature is. I think it has to be Boyd on this one. Otherwise, we're good. But I would make a motion that we change the signature to Commissioner Bingham and approve water grant contract 2534.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve state water grant contract 25-34. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, you mentioned in our earlier meeting that the legal counsel said that we don't really have to have an ordinance, but we'd sure like to discuss this issue.
Yeah, so item E, pending ordinance agricultural protection areas, no action needs to be taken on this. And a pending ordinance would not apply in this case. Basically, based on legal advice from the county as well as from the ombudsman's office, we, yeah, I don't I don't know how, what, do you have questions? Do you want me to dive into a little bit of the history on this?
So why did you put it on the agenda?
So when we put it on the agenda, I'll just jump into the history and that'll tell us why. So we've started seeing an uptick in agricultural protection area requests, which is fantastic. The, what we've run into and at our last planning commission meeting, some planning commission members voiced a concern about one of the requirements in state code. So state code has a couple criteria that are to be used to evaluate whether a property should be placed in ag protection or not. Those, I'll just read through them real quick. The effect of the creation of the proposed area on the planning policies and objectives of the county, whether or not the land is currently being used for agricultural production, whether or not the land is zoned for agricultural use, whether or not the land is viable for agricultural production, the extent and nature of existing or proposed farm improvements, and in the case of an agricultural protection area, anticipated trends in agricultural and technological conditions applicable to the use of the land in question. Those are the five. Now, the two that popped out for the planning commission were the first and the third. So the effect of the creation of the proposed area on planning policies and objectives of the county as well as whether or not the land is zoned for agricultural use. So the planning commission directed staff, myself and my coworkers in the planning department to look into something that would in a way get ahead of the curve. So let's say someone comes in and they apply for an ag protection area that, and they're in an unzoned area of the county. So it has been determined that unzoned is not a zoning designation. It's not a zone per county code, nor is it a zone per state code. So in that case, technically, the planning commission should provide a recommendation to the county commission that any parcels within that unzoned area application for an ag protection area should not be approved. Now, if it's zone, if it's in a zone for agricultural use, then they would likely recommend approval based on those, you know, if it meets the rest of the criteria. So someone could submit an application. If they're in an unzoned area, they can go through the process, which can take up to 120 days only to find out that they would be, potentially be denied and then have to go back, zone it to a zone that allows agriculture as agriculture as a use and go through the process over again. Or we could kind of head that off by having something in our code. So the pending ordinance would be the addition of language in our code that states if you're in an unzoned area or a zone, because we do have one zone that does not allow agriculture. It's a small lot residential zone. If you're in an unzoned area or a zone that does not allow for agriculture, then you would need to go through a zone change to apply, shouldn't say a zone, I guess it is a zone change for the residential zone. Or it would be have your property zoned for agriculture in order to be eligible for an ag protection area and the benefits that come along with that ag protection area. So that was to be the pending ordinance. Now, due to legal intricacies, having spoken with the ombudsman's office and our attorney's office, at this point, it's determined that a pending ordinance, this isn't considered a land use application per state code and so it does not qualify for a pending ordinance. So they just said, if you want to add that, you can go ahead and work towards adding that, but it wouldn't be underneath a pending ordinance status, if that makes sense.
So where do we go from here?
So from here, basically, staff would continue. The the whole purpose of a pending ordinance is is when applications come in, those applications basically just get set towards the back of the desk until the pending ordinance is either expires or until the updated language is adopted. And then those applications come back for review. Now, in this case, not having, not being under a pending ordinance clause, any applications that come in would just be subject to the standard agricultural protection area language in state code and requirements in state code. And any language that the that we would add or potentially add to our code would just be done in its own time. So that may take, you know, So that may take, you know, sixty, ninety, hundred and twenty days to do that. If the planning commission wants us to continue on this track, then we would continue on that track and bring something back to you eventually.
So I'm guessing that most of the agricultural people in the county don't understand that as intricately as you do. I'm wondering, is it feasible that while we, while we're not acting on this today, that maybe we ought to see if we can organize a meeting where people can come and have one-on-one discussion?
Yeah.
With the commissioners and with you and your staff, so we make sure that people understand what's going on?
Yeah.
Because I think there's a, there's a, there's a lot of confusion out there with this. And so we, I mean, we've received tons of phone calls, and so I just think, because it just gets confusing, as we've just discussed this, we talk about it one way, and then all of a sudden, now we're sitting down, now we're trying to understand how this works together with state code, county code, and, and it just becomes very confusing. So I just think it would be appropriate to have a meeting where we can have everybody come, we can sit down, we can discuss and articulate it, and give it some time to it so everybody can absorb it. That way, if there are some that are confused, we can continue to walk through it so we all understand how this works.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to host a meeting. I've taken many phone calls over the last few days and more than happy to take more phone calls to address any questions or emails. I mean, that's, that's what we're here for. In that same few days, I've also seen things on social media that are, you know, while well-intended, they are misinformed. And so having that perpetuated isn't helpful either. So anything we can do to, to clear it up, I'm, I'm all for that.
Well, I just think it'd be appropriate, simply because we were looking at state code, county code, and we're trying to all absorb this, figure out how it all works, and I, so I just think if we had that meeting, I think it'd be appropriate, if we could just get something set up and sent out to folks so that they know to come and attend that.
Do you think our state land Ombudsman would come up to that as well?
You know, that's a good question. In my conversations with them, they, they did specifically say that they only tangentially work with agricultural protection areas.
Right.
And that's because agricultural protection areas fall outside of the called LUDMA, the Land Use Development Act. But we can definitely, I don't think, I mean, they do receive funding for training, and I think that they would probably be happy to brush up and come help, but I'm more than happy to ask.
But they would understand zoning, right?
Yes.
And that's some of the issues we're dealing with, right?
I just think it'd be beneficial to have them in here with us to have that discussion.
Okay, Scott, do you mind if we give you an assignment? Will you, will you line something up? And I think we probably ought to have a decent-sized facility.
Okay.
I think maybe the, if we could figure out how to facilitate it, maybe at the fairgrounds.
Maybe at the fairgrounds. And if we could, if we could then get the Ombudsman's Office to send somebody, if you, just line that up and then just tell us, and maybe Steve would like to come as well.
Okay, happy to.
And let's go have a discussion, so everybody understands, so that we don't. Last thing we want to do, the thing that's concerning to me is we've encouraged people to do agricultural protection areas, and the last thing I want to do is to make them think that we're going backwards on that. I want to make sure everybody understands.
Yep.
So, and the sooner the better.
Yep.
I have a very short memory, I'll forget by next week if we don't get it done, so.
Will do.
We have it on our minutes for next meeting, so you won't forget.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, Buildings and Grounds, Cody Illam. I'm sorry, Cody, for teasing you earlier, I apologize.
You're all right, you're all right. So this is one of our projects that we have from the CIP that was approved from the budget this year. So what this is, is we are upgrading all of our heating and cooling systems throughout the county and all of our buildings. We're putting them on a SCADA system so that we can monitor them and try and save some, make them more efficient, and then in the process of making them more efficient, we can be able to save some money. So went out to bid for a month, we had over thirty bid holders that took the information, and we had five applicants that submitted. And so these, this actually come in under budget, I think we budgeted a little over two hundred thousand, and the low bid was Salmon with, their numbers were a hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, and that is for every building that we have. The Sheriff's Building already has this system set up because it's the, one of the newer ones, it's the Joe, they have to maintain that, so we won't affect that one, but all the rest of the buildings will have this added. Basically, the thermostats will communicate to a computer, the computer will tell us if it's hot, cold, or if it's not working, and occupancy or unoccupied, which we don't have anywhere. Any, any employee can go right now and turn the thermostat up to whatever temperature or down to whatever temperature, so we're going to eliminate that and cause some happiness in that way, but it will be way more efficient.
Okay.
That's great, we like happiness.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I'm sure Steve will be very happy about it, being able to turn his thermostat down. So we're gonna do a pre-construction meeting next week, but Salmon is really good, they offer quite a bit of parts and components that will work good with the county, and as we grow, we'll be able to put them together, so we're, we're happy with them.
So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the award HVAC contract as presented by Cody.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to award the HVAC contract from the Buildings and Grounds, Cody Illam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Weed Department, Wyatt Freeze. I'll have you know, I went on a, a little tour of Cutler Dam the other day, and every time I walked by a dyers' hoat, I pulled it out. I want you to know that.
Oh, I'm proud of you. That's awesome. Every little bit helps, that's for sure. So Wyatt Freeze, Boxhother County Weed Department, I just have the one item. Recently, Tim Douglas from Howell ended his term on the, or his term came to fruition on the Boxhother County Weed Board, and so they needed to fill his position. So they, the board mulled over a bunch of names and ended up voting on Rhett Muns, who's also from Howell. They try and, the board is trying to have different members from different areas throughout the county to have kind of equal representation. So anyway, they voted and are recommending Rhett Muns as the new county weed control board member.
Any more questions?
I'd make a motion to accept the appointment of Rhett Muns to the Weed Board.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to appoint Rhett Muns to the Weed Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I will say.
You're out of time.
That I'm out of time.
I apologize.
I, I will say that I talked, I went to the Weed Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and, and the Weed Board had nothing but high comments for Boxhother County's Weed Board and the things that they're doing, so we appreciate you very much.
Yes, no, no problem, we, we just try and do the best we can, so.
Appreciate you.
We know that, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, item fourteen A. Cade. Cade. Says here Kevin, but that looks like Cade.
Cade Palmer, Chief Deputy Sheriff. I have a contract we sign every year with the Forest Service. They're always shorthanded, and by default, we're responding up into our Forest Service areas to handle all sorts of issues. This is what I'll call a meager way to get some of those funds back. It's a six thousand dollar contract, we just submit the hours we spend up there and get a reimbursement from them. So nothing's really changed. And I just need a signature from the commissioner.
I'd make a motion that we renew the Forest Service Agreement twenty-five thirty-two.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to renew the Forest Service Agreement twenty-five thirty-two with Boxhother County Sheriff's Office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All righty. Item B, fourteen B. Stephen Hadfield.
Yes, the state statute authorizes spotlighting or night hunting only if it's authorized by each county by an ordinance. The state recently revised that statute. We took a look at our ordinance, it didn't comply with that statute any longer, and the decision was made that we don't want to authorize spotlighting or hunting at night in Boxhother County, so we're repealing the old ordinance and not passing a new one. That's what's before you.
So I have one question. If I have raccoons in my corn, can I still shoot them after dark? Okay, maybe that's not.
Fall into depredation, but I don't know.
That's a conversation for another time.
Another time, I'm sorry.
But I would make a motion that we repeal ordinance two oh four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to repeal ordinance two oh four spotlighting in Boxhother County.
Do we need to adopt this one? Does this need to be adopted then? Okay, so it's.
Motion to repeal and adopt the resol, is resolution, is that what it is?
It's ordinance six twenty-three.
Okay, so the motion then would be that we're going to repeal, let's see if I get this right, we're adopting the new ordinance to repeal the old ordinance, that's what we're gonna do.
So is the new ordinance two oh four?
Six twenty-three.
Six twenty-three.
So we're adopting ordinance six twenty-three to repeal ordinance two oh four. That's the motion.
Second.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to repeal ordinance, I mean, to approve ordinance six twenty-three, which repeals ordinance two oh four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That was tricky. Okay, Janica, HR.
Okay, I have a series of five agreements for this fifteen A item. The county has decided that we would like to switch our insurance broker. We've gone through all the proper procedures to do that, and this contract comes to you for authorization for me to sign that as the county representative.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the HR manager to sign the insurance broker contract twenty-five twenty-seven through twenty-five thirty-one.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to authorize the HR manager to sign insurance broker contracts twenty-five dash twenty-seven through twenty-five dash thirty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, just so you're aware, that'll take effect June first.
Okay.
Okay, the next item I have is a request from the landfill. We currently have a weekend differential pay policy at the fairgrounds, and they want to implement the same policy at the, at the landfill as the fairgrounds.
I'd make a motion that we allow the landfill to adopt the weekend differential pay, similar to what we have at the fairground in the policy.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the landfill, landfill weekend differential pay policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the final item I have is, as requested by the county commission, we've updated the travel policy to include the new update from our liability insurance regarding rental cars.
Then I'd make a motion that we accept the new travel policy updates with the rental car information that we received from our insurance company, USP.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the landfill, landfill weekend differential pay policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the final item I have is, as requested by the county commission, we've updated the travel policy to include the new update from our liability insurance regarding rental cars.
Then I'd make a motion that we accept the new travel policy updates with the rental car information that we received from our insurance company, USP.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the travel policy updates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Janica.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for our public comment. Public comment, no action will be taken at this time. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment roll and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the county commission rules and procedures. Speakers will have one, three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the county commission only. This is a time to be heard, there will not be a back-and-forth dialogue with commissioners. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the county commission. With that in mind, we will start the first one with Deanna Hardy.
When the Methodist church was turned over to Corinne City, the city should have sold the property instead of spending hundreds of thousands of the people's money to restore it, causing the citizens the financial burden of the upkeep, repairs, maintenance, utilities, et cetera. What will happen if more churches get turned over to the cities? Can the people afford to restore all the churches? Is this the proper rule of government? I attended the Corinne City Council meeting in September of twenty twenty-three, and it was reported that the Methodist Restoration Project had received two hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the tourism grant funds, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine in donations and fundraiser. This year, twenty twenty-five, the Methodist Restoration Project was awarded fifteen thousand from the tourism grant fund. The restoration project is still not completed, and the cost keeps climbing. This restoration project is turning out to be a money pit. I have a copy of the Corinne City Council report included in this. So the total cost so far is thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven, hundred and eighty-four cents. I just received a flyer in the mail asking for a donation for the Methodist Church Restoration Project. I declined to contribute because this project has already taken my money by force through the tourism tax. This restoration project should be turned to the free market system. It is not the proper rule of government to publicly fund restoring churches. The Boxhother Committee of Liberty again opposes the tourism tax. Government needs to stop taking the people's money through this tax and spending it on all unconstitutional projects such as the Methodist Church Restoration Project. Wealth distribution is a Marxist ideology, taking from one to give to another that did not earn it. We encourage all state and local governments to oppose the tourism tax and support the free market system that can and will give the same results in tourism. Only the government will not be involved in forcibly taking our money and deciding when, how, and where to spend our money. Thank you. And then the other thing I needed, wanted to comment really quick is, it said, the lady reported, reported that seventy-four percent of the people do not use the bookmobile program. So I'm thinking, why are we being all forced to pay for the bookmobile program when only seventy-four percent do not use it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now our next will be ten months. I think Tyler shuffled them, I don't know.
I started up a little...
Gentlemen, thank you. According to the rules, I'm gonna address the commission, but the public that's in there, I hope they listen, I hope you can hear me, I just got my new hearing aids on the way over here, and I was hung up. Anyway, I don't do social media, I don't do Facebook, and I don't listen to my voicemail very often, or read my email faithfully once a month, but anyway, I got contacted the old fashioned way on the cell phone today on this Ag Protection Act, but Scott did a wonderful job of explaining it to everybody and left us all confused. Glad the commission decided to hold public meetings, because I think there is a lot of confusion out there. But the main reason I'm here is to voice my opinion on zoning. When you talk zoning to a lot of people in the county, they just turn you off and say, "No, no, we don't want any more governor, government overreach, or governor, gu, governor", I'm even gonna bring the governor into this, but government, but unzoned is just wide open. We need the unincorporated areas of this county to be zoned, whether they be zoned ag, whether they be zoned for whatever, but they need to be zoned to protect us, and I know a lot of people don't understand that, but the few years I've been around, seventy-one next week, I've learned that we should be zoned, and Laurie spent ten years on the planning and zoning, so I see the advantage, that we need to be zoned. And as far as I'm concerned, in Hansel Valley, we could zone at A six forty-one, neighborhood Washington, or A twenty, or A one sixty, or twenty, if it was A six forty, I'd only have room for thirty houses or so out there, but anyway, irrelevant. I'm in favor, and I don't know if the commission's got the authority, to just zone the unincorporated areas of the county at their discretion for ag use, and then the public has got to be, my understanding, is they've got to be, if someone comes in to change the zone, it's got to be noticed, it's got to be advertised, and then notify the neighbors, more or less, what you got in mind? So, the zoning would protect us, that's my whole point of it here, but I do believe it's a lack of education on our part, or everyone in the county, to understand why we zone, and what this Ag Protection Act is. Now that's my comment on that. How much time I got left, Marla?
You got about twenty-five, about thirty seconds roughly.
I'm in favor of the Bookmobile. It's been there forever, in the west Boxholder County, it's still stopped, you stopped, our kids read books, I even read some books out of there, but yeah, some people don't like it, but a lot of people don't do social media, haven't got access, everybody, all the books are on, not my phone, but so I'm in favor of the Bookmobile. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, next one is Ricky Hanson.
Thank you for hearing me, I'm here to talk about the ag too. I remember a few years ago coming here and talking with the county commissioner about drain lines and stuff. Drain lines run through our farm, and we've got like a subdivision, well, three or four houses went to the north of us, and I know these houses, one of them is on top of a drain line, and we were supposed to address that here through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I don't know if we've got enough checks and balances to protect us on that. As well as if we change zoning in one area, I've had this conversation with Tremonton and a lot of Elwood Garland many times, what you guys do in your district affects me down the stream, like a half a mile away, two miles away, where we have water that comes off of a lateral down, they put a subdivision in, they're not thinking of what that's impacting me down the road. Case in point, the other day, I went to check my water, somebody put a head gate in, blocked the ditch off, took all my siphon tubes, threw them in the ditch, flooding everywhere. I mean, there's got to be fencing put up, there's got to be issues like that, but then they put up a fence, then I can't burn a ditch. You know, we really need to look at this ag deal. I can see the ag protection area, but if a piece comes out of it, it's gonna affect us down, you know, and it's just a big issue, and I'm glad you guys want a meeting on it so we can all get together and talk about what we can do to survive this and make it better, so we don't have problems, so we don't have to worry about the liability issues and all that stuff, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ricky. Okay, our last one is Sam McMurty.
Rough-looking bunch here.
Been a long day.
I'm just concerned, along with what Rick's been talking about, and I think...
A little closer to your microphone, please.
Having a meeting that talks about, that is a good idea, great idea. My concern's about what has been going on around the county and the construction and stuff that's going on. Oh yeah, I had an opportunity to go down to West Weber, watch my kids play sports. I don't want this to turn into West Weber. That makes me sick. There's hardly any agriculture left down there, it's some of the best land in our state. Anyway, I'm concerned about, for example, the beginning of a construction area, the PERC test. I think they're failing. I went and walked the street when I was trying to be an idiot and run for commissioner, but I walked this one street that's outside of town, there's seventeen new homes along there, about two years old. Only two of them have had water in their basement at least every other year. So they've picked an area, and they've gone ahead and done the construction, but they haven't done enough PERC tests to know, they probably tested in the middle of summer when there's nothing going on.
No water.
Or a time when it's really, really wet is when it needs to be tested, to find out what the limit is. And I'm just concerned about things like that, or people getting, investing this huge amounts of money in homes, and they're not in safe areas. Another concern I have is, if you go to certain areas in Arizona, you'll find that whenever they build an area, they take an area and they're gonna build a bunch of houses and apartments or whatever there, they're required to lay out ten percent of their land for recreation. It's part of the building, has to be there, and we don't see that here at all. Lucky if we have, what we got, two or three parks in town, about it, in Tremonton. And so I think there's a concern there, and I guess that goes to our Planning and Zoning Committee would probably be the best place to put that. Those are some, a couple of concerns, and one is some of the annexing ideas that we have that affect people that don't want to be annexed into the cities, because of the rights they lose because the Ag Protection Area protects them. So, another concern there. I have other things too, I know I don't have much time, I know your time is valuable, and we appreciate what all you guys do, and how you look at everything, and you're concerned about what we're concerned about, and we want to work with you any way we can to protect our area. I think every man, every person in family has a right to sell the property, I'm not against that, but I think we need to get it under control to where it's better planned and better zoned, so we can all still enjoy our way of life here.
Okay, thanks, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Okay, we have another gentleman, Drew Anderson, that would like to take a moment.
Drew Anderson, Bothwell, Utah, appreciate you entertaining my comments today. The Ag Protection's a big, a big issue in our area, and I am glad you guys also have decided we talk about that with a group as a whole, and hopefully that's in a time that half of us are not changing a stream of water. I had to call and beg somebody to go change mine so I could be here tonight. My other comments are, I think sometimes we're being taken advantage in the county and rural areas by maybe some of our lax policies with such construction that Mr. McMurty just addressed. I'm pretty sure maybe that's right up the road from me that he's discussing about, where we've allowed them to come in and put all these subdivisions and developments on half-acre plots, where you got a high water table, now I gotta worry about my neighbor's sewer coming to the surface and moving in on the rest of us, and then I got a city that's concerned and now wants to come out and annex that property in because it's the right thing to do, but it should have never happened in the beginning. So, I would ask that the county look at policy change to make it to where you have to have a little more acreage if you want to build in the county and unincorporated Boxholder County, and make that more of a turnoff to a developer or future construction. I know growth's coming, but there's a way to control it, there's a way to monitor it, and I think it starts with that. We start divvying out half-acre and under lots in the county and unincorporated, we're gonna have water problems, we're gonna have sewer problems, and we're gonna have tile problems, and I would ask that you guys look into that, dial into it, and set some new standards and some new policies for our county, so we can get ahead of the growth that's coming, so we don't have future problems that are gonna cost us a lot more money down the road, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's our last one. So we're doing the warrant register.
And personnel actions coming.
Personnel actions, yeah.
I think this one you gotta sign still. Yeah, that one isn't in there, I think we got them all otherwise. Looks like, yep, just need Tyler to sign them now. Tyler needs to sign, he needs to sign. Okay. Just put your mark. What did I say first?
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I would make a motion, we go into closed session for personnel and pending litigation.
Second.
We got a motion to go into, I mean, to closed session for...
Personnel issues and pending litigation.
Personnel issues and litigation, pending litigation, by Commissioner Perry and second by Commissioner Vincent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.